Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Today is Tuesday, August 18th. Man, this month is flying by. Time is 9:00 a.m., and the Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have Commissioner Laciando with us today. Commissioner Malloy is absent. We have quite a few folks with us on the bridge, and so instead of going around, we're just gonna make sure, if you can just sign in here in the back, that would be great. And we have Dottie Owens and her staff, it looks like most of her staff with us. Kelly Schultz, we have Katie Reed, Don Burns, Elizabeth Mon, Bob Perkins, Bud McQuaid, Leisha Ellington, Evan, Emmadin, Jessica, ooh, they're moving around, Scott Cobert, Jessica Barrowood, and Sarah Roberts. And if I missed anyone, hopefully I didn't. I think that's it. Okay, maybe we're good. We're gonna go ahead and start with changes to the agenda, and I'm gonna need a motion to remove 713A 13835 from the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the agenda to remove item 5, Fran 4, Agreement Number 13835, Memorandum of Understanding between Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District for Support of the Community Paramedic Program from the Agenda.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Okay, so this morning, yay, we get to start up with employee recognition. We're so excited. Tanya Fleming, 20 years, 2-0, the big 2-0. Where is Tanya? Can you see you? Raise your hand.
Thank you.
In the back there. You're so far away with your mask on, it's hard to see. I'm gonna have Commissioner Laciando read the bio that was given to us this morning, and she'll read that, and then I'm sure that Dottie and a few folks will have a couple of words to say. So go ahead, Commissioner.
Great. Well, Tanya Fleming, Ada County Coroner's Office Executive Assistant, started her journey with Ada County in May of 2000 in the Commissioner's office. It only took her a year for her to realize that while she loved working for the county, her interest was with the coroner's office. Shortly after her one-year anniversary, she was offered a position with the coroner's office as office manager, and has been there from that time on. Over the years, Tanya has participated in various management training, and also received her ABMDI certification under past coroner Erwin Sonnenberg. Tanya, we acknowledge and appreciate that your dedication and knowledge has been a huge part of the success of the office. You're eager to assist, whether it's an attorney with subpoena, working with media, managing and policing daily schedules, accounts payable and receivable, and lending a shoulder to a living family member. The many hats you wear at Ada County Coroner's Office is vital to their success, and we appreciate all you do for the office every day. Thank you for your many years of service and dedication to making our mission and vision the forefront of everything you do. Fantastic. So, Dottie, I'm sure you have some things to say.
Yes, we just wanted Tanya to know that she is the soul of this office and does everything she can to help everybody. There's not one thing that we don't ask her to do that she turns away or refuses to assist with, and every single department in this office appreciates everything she does.
Yay. Anyone else care to say a few words? Jen?
See, I mean.
What's that?
That's the saying.
And I did say thank you so much. I've been so blessed to be with Ada County for 20 years, and the people I've been able to work with and the leadership I've been able to render is second to none. No one better, and I'm very thankful for my journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. How many coroners have you been able to work with?
Two. I started under Erwin Sonnenberg, and then I actually was able to work with Dottie. She was an investigator for Erwin, and then when she was elected in 2015, I was blessed to stay on under her, so I've been very, very grateful for all of them, all of my wonderful blessings.
Nice.
Yes, too.
Are you excited to get a new facility?
I'm so excited.
We're looking at you all in the tiny conference room, and yes.
Hard to socially distance yourselves. So Jen wanted to say a couple of words to you, Tanya.
I mean, right.
There's the camera. Yeah.
Hi, Tanya, Jen Bennett here. I just wanted to say on behalf of our office how much we appreciate you, and I wanted to congratulate you personally for your 20 years. You have been an absolute pleasure to work with. I've worked with you for that long, and so in the trenches, whenever I needed anything, you were there. You always helped us. You always help our office. You have an amazing reputation in our office. Everyone loves you, and I just wanted to say congratulations personally and wish you another great 20 years. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it.
That's so kind. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll give you a proper photo and congratulatory in person when we're on the other side of the hill of COVID. So, thank you, your whole team, and thank you again, Tanya. We really appreciate your service to the county, and the work that you do is really, it's challenging, and we acknowledge that, and we really appreciate you just being a real role model for everyone here, so thank you.
That's very kind. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead, and we're gonna move on to, we have a couple of appointments for volunteer boards, and we're gonna start with the reappointment of Steve Corey on the SWAT committee. Diana, do you wanna say a couple of words? You've worked with Steve, and then we'll go ahead and take the motion.
Yep, and I think I have one motion for both, so I'll make a couple comments on both.
Okay, perfect.
So Solid Waste Advisory Committee has, you know, at times been somewhat fraught, but I think it's been very important to bring all the different perspectives to the table and appreciate the partnership Steve has had. We also have Jack Methner. We've been without an air quality advisory board appointee for a while, and went through that process to find someone, and Matt Stoll is recommending Jack. So with that, I'm gonna move to reappoint Steve Corey to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and appoint Jack Methner to the air quality advisory board as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next, I need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. So first, we're gonna take up the final ranking and request interfe fee negotiations for RFQ 20069. Bob Perkins.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner Laciando, can you guys hear me okay?
We sure can.
All right, perfect. Well, before you this morning, we have the final ranking and request interfe fee negotiations for RFQ 20069, the commissioning agent for Ada County Jail EPOD Expansion Project. And the evaluation team has completed the initial evaluation of the proposals, but would like a little more time for some continued due diligence, and would like to retable a final ranking and request interfe fee negotiations to the August 25th, 2020 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, and just for clarification, the commissioning agent is for the financing?
It's the commissioning agent is the person responsible to make sure all the different types of electronics, HVAC system.
Oh, okay.
Everything works in the facility as it was intended to work.
Okay. I was not familiar with that term, commissioning agent, so that's what that is. Okay, go ahead then, and we'll take up a motion to table it.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to retable RFQ 20069 for further discussion and due diligence to August 25th, 2020.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, new business, and I'm gonna open the public hearing on Resolution 2542, the development of an impact fee advisory board. Do we have anyone here to provide testimony? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion from the board? Commissioner Laciando.
Just, you know, in case there's anybody watching, paying attention. I think it's important for folks to understand that impact fees is a very proscribed process. I've had folks reach out to me saying, "Why aren't you assessing impact fees yet?" And it's very proscribed under state code, and this is one of the pieces that we have to put into place. So with that, I move to approve Resolution Number 2542 as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second that, and all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, licenses, and I'll need a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve and ratify the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one new license and two license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, clerk's office. Do we have anyone from the clerk's office? There we go, Katie, you need to unmute. There you go.
Morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you just fine now.
Great. Phil is attending the annual Idaho Association of County Reporters and Clerks Conference in Moscow today and tomorrow, so I just have a couple short updates for all of you. First, as you know, we have an election coming up next Tuesday. Everything in preparation for that is running very smoothly, which is a relief. And then secondly, we are anticipating the governor is going to issue a proclamation sometime this week to call a special session to tackle a couple issues in regards to the November election. So that's kind of all the updates we have to share, but if you have any answering questions, if you have.
Great, thank you. I'm assuming I haven't heard anything on the media, but I'm assuming Idaho has not been impacted by the removal of post office boxes from any of the streets.
You know, we're trying to keep tabs on that, but there's not really much to share, I mean, no updates that I'm aware of yet in regards to that.
All right, thanks, Katie. Anything else?
So I actually, Katie, I talked to Phil briefly yesterday. I've had a number of people reach out to me with questions and concerns, and I think you guys already have sort of the beginnings of some FAQs, but it might behoove us to further flush that out, just with the kind of national rhetoric and everything going on, just to make sure we can get good information out there. I think it behooves us to do that. So I have that list, and I'll get it to Phil for you guys to take a look at, because I've been sort of collecting the questions I've been receiving.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Next up, Claims Journal. I don't need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated August 14th, 2020.
Second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, personal action forms.
I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including one conditional pay increase, five introductory period pay completion, six leaves-of-pay, one miscellaneous, six promotions, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Yeah, second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, assessor's office. Bob, Mr. McQuaid, are you there? There you are. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Laciando. Just a couple of things this morning. The Board of Tax Appeals will be accepting applications for appeals from the Board of Equalization up through this Friday. And as of today, we have 44 appeals filed, and 20 of those are just by two appellants. We only have one appellant, surprisingly, from the River Run area. So we'll see how that turns out. I expected more than that, but 44 appeals, that's probably fairly typical. Something else I think is noteworthy this year is that the appeals are all gonna be telephonic. There will be no in-person appeals at the Board of Tax Appeals. The second thing I just want to mention, the next item on the agenda are tax cancellations, and there are quite a few of them. Most of those have to do with Halkers exemptions that have been processed. We'll, after the law closes, we'll come to our attention that there was an exemption out there, and we'll grant that exemption. I mention that because next year, we're gonna be having a lot of exemptions when the new law goes into effect, where you can actually receive the homeless exemption year-round rather than just up through April 58. Also, on the list of the tax cancellations are several exemptions that have been granted, the N and N exemptions. So, yes, we've got the Board of Tax Appeals and the tax cancellations that are coming up. That's everything I have for you this morning.
Thank you. Bob, do you track, on the Board of Tax Appeals, do you track their decisions when they're finalized?
Madam Chairman, we do.
Would you?
I don't have that with me, but in years past, the Board of Equalization would change, oh, maybe 10%, 15% of our decisions. And those are your decisions that they would be changing. But the last several years, we have a, we'll say out of every 20, they might change one of the opinions. So we have a really good track record going over there, and I think for two reasons. Number one is your decisions are really good decisions, nice, sound decisions, but then also the present staff that's over there presenting the appeals are doing a very good job. And by the way, that is fairly atypical. Many other counties have a real problem with Board of Tax Appeals. They, like, Board of Tax Appeals doesn't give, doesn't really give them enough weight, and... Does that answer probably a lot more than you have?
It does, Bob, and if you wouldn't mind letting us know, I know that we can go on their side and we can pull up the decisions, but if you could let the board know when those decisions have been made, probably at the end of the appeal period, I think it would behoove us to kind of go in there and read, you know, what they're thinking and how they're analyzing, especially the ones if they did overturn anything. I just think it's a good learning opportunity for us as a new board.
Madam Chairman, yes, we'll be sure to do that, and then I always read the decisions. I find them very instructive. It just gives great guidance to our staff, what we need to be watching out for during the assessment secretly, and also when we go to do the appeals. So they're very instructive, and we should get those opinions to you.
Thank you. Anything else from the assessor's office?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Laciando, that's everything.
Thank you. Good to see you this morning.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Would you, so you said we had 44 appeals to BTA. How does that track compared to last year?
Well, you said 20 of those were from...
I don't know, I don't have last year's numbers here, but again, yes, this is not a normal list at all.
Okay.
We're, we're, I can just write in where it would typically, where it would typically be, but I'll get those numbers to you.
Okay.
And you did say that 20 of those parcels were two appellants?
That's correct. One is a builder, about 10 of those are from a builder, and another 10 are some storage units.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I cut them down. Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
All right.
Storage units, right.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and take up tax cancellations, and I will need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for 2018, nine tax cancellations for 2019, and 17 tax cancellations for 2020, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, Treasurer's Office. Morning, Beth.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. I'm showing a poor network connection, so I hope you can hear me okay.
We can hear you just fine.
Oh, great. So as a first matter, we will be working on these tax cancellations. So the Treasurer's Office is kind of the last step in that process. So we actively work these cancellations as soon as you approve them to ensure that our bills go out correctly in November. Today is a really exciting day in the Treasurer's Office. It's our go-live date for our enhanced online payment portal. So this is a link on our website where taxpayers can pay through an Ada County vendor. So it's different than people paying from their own bank, but it's an additional option where they can pay through our website. And I would just note about this project is that it's really driven by the taxpayer feedback that we've received during our last tax collections. For the users who were paying through our website, they found our website to be not very user-friendly. They might forget their password, and they only have the ability to make a single payment. So some of the enhancements that we're rolling out today are the ability to pay as a guest, so that's just a single payment without creating a user ID or password. And what I'm really excited about is that taxpayers can schedule future recurring payments. So for example, when the tax bills come out in November, the taxpayer can schedule their first half payment for December, and then schedule the second half next June. So we're hopeful that will help serve as a reminder, potentially eliminate requests for late charge and interest waivers. But another thing taxpayers could do is, would schedule that second half next June, instead of scheduling a single half payment next June, they could schedule six monthly payments from January to June. So essentially, serving as a self escrow. So again, it's not gonna work for all of our taxpayers, but for those who are using the portal, it just gives additional flexibility in the taxpayer scheduling their own payments, picking the dates that they want the funds to come out of their bank account, and just providing more options for taxpayers to pay online over this coming year. So we're really excited about that today.
That's wonderful. So how are we noticing taxpayers of this capability, new capability?
Well, we will definitely include it in our winter in November for the tax bills. Right now, we have very low payment volume just because of our due dates. So we will put that on our website once we're certain that, we're doing some final testing today and tomorrow. It will be on our website, but the key push will be tied to sending out the tax bills this November.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Beth? Okay, thank you so much. Good to see you.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, next up, I'll need a motion for approval of minutes.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, weed and pest.
I move to approve four notices of liens and three releases of liens for weed and pest as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, we, it looks like we've got one interim event for 2020, or 2021.
Okay. Gem Club.
Yep.
Okay.
That does have the COVID caveat.
COVID caveat, yes. All right. Madam Chair, I move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Yes, second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next up, parks and waterways. I think we have Scott Cobert with us on bridge if you have any questions. I know we have some events that are scheduled through October is what we're looking for, and in light of the new, more stricter mandates with gatherings of 10 or less, it looks like we're probably going to need, if we haven't done, so are ready to cancel those through October. Commissioner Laciando?
Yeah, I guess I just would take the opportunity to share. So you talked with Dr. Burks a couple weeks ago, and Dr. Burks is the head of the White House for the IRS Task Force.
You can go ahead and take your mask off.
And yesterday, I was on a call with her and Commissioner Dale from Canyon County, and the fact that she's taking the time to call two commissioners from Idaho personally says a lot about where we're at, our positivity rate, our case per 100,000. It's not going where it needs to be, and I guess I would note, you know, we've kind of, the tagline has been, "We're all in this together from the beginning," but we really are, and what we're seeing is that we are canceling things here in Ada County, but it is headed right over to Canyon County, and there's, you know, been news stories to that effect. So I, you know, I think we need to do this. I guess I'm, I don't have good answers right now, because I don't feel like we are achieving the decrease in Ada County that we could because this back and forth between Ada and Canyon. So I say that, Scott, not that I have some magical better answer. I think we, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. We need to do the right thing here in Ada County. But it's certainly frustrating, because you're sacrificing at the Barbara Park Event Center, people are sacrificing, you know, their events, et cetera, and we're not seeing the reductions in cases and positivity to the degree that we would like. So I'll keep, I'll keep working, but that's just where we're at at this point.
So Scott, what you're looking for is direction through October. Is that good for you for now?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner Laciando, I think that's, that's fine. You know, I wasn't sure if we were gonna talk about September and October or just September, so it's at the pleasure of the board, whatever you'd like to do. We would just like the opportunity to get that information out to these renters as soon as possible.
Yeah, okay. Are you comfortable going through October based on where we're at with numbers? You wanna just take this one month at a time?
I don't know. What do you think, Scott? I say we take it maybe one month at a time. I mean, I wish I could say I felt like it was gonna get better, but...
I think currently, Madam Chair, Commissioner, you know, we're about six weeks out from the end of September, so I'll leave that up to you. It's kind of at your discretion. I'll just let you know, we have six weddings currently booked for September, and two other events in September for a total of eight, and then October is exactly the same, six weddings in October and two other kind of social events as well.
Yeah.
So we're talking about 16 total events.
Okay. And unfortunately, all of them over 10. Well, why don't we go ahead and just take this through the end of September, and then, because it's good to have you come back, Scott, and let us know what people are thinking, what you're hearing. They continue to go to Canyon County, and you're hearing that. We would certainly like that feedback as well. It just gives us more reason to really go, you know, have conversations with our fellow elected officials in Canyon County. So to have numbers and facts is gonna be helpful.
And to be clear, just so we know, if the site of a cluster actually is an event in Canyon County, but the resident lives in Ada County, those cases get counted for us.
Yeah. I know. Okay, you wanna go ahead and make a motion?
I'm not annoyed about this at all.
No, I know, I am as well. So I think this is A, and it doesn't have on here that we need to make a motion, but I think we do, just to be clear for Scott.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve the three Barbara Park event, education events agreement as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And we're gonna cancel.
And I'll do that, and then we'll do the next one.
Okay. Yep, okay, all those in favor state aye. I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Next motion.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I move to cancel events over 10 people at Barbara Park Event Center through the end of September.
Second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Anything else you need, Scott?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks for being with us this morning. Appreciate it. All right, I'll need a motion for the agreements, and I assume that you've read through the agreements? You've had to sign them, so...
Yep, and I need to note, it's 14, not 15, because we have moved the one M of U from the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. So Madam Chair, I move to approve 14 agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Yeah, second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is habit, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have procurement, opening of RFQ. This is 20065, commissioning agent, and this was already tabled, wasn't it? It's been on here twice, Bob.
Madam Chair, this one is for the coroner's facility. So we have two commissioning agents working at the same time.
Got it.
This will be actually the opening of the proposals.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Laciando, we received eight qualification statements for RFQ 20065, the commissioning agent for the new coroner's facility. And Alyssa brought those up on your screen. You should be able to see those. And if you could, go ahead and read to the record the eight proposers for the record. Appreciate it.
We don't have them up yet.
Okay. Alyssa, can you go ahead and bring those up?
I've got my screen shared.
Alyssa, we're not seeing it.
Ah, I can stop and try it again. Can you see it now?
No, it looks like you still need to click on the tab to the left that brings them up.
Yeah, we can see the...
Here. Let's go down to submissions, Alyssa.
Oh, well, yeah, I'm just making sure you...
Yeah, we can see, we, yeah, we see the whole page, but we're not showing the names.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. I'm gonna unseal them right now.
Okay, Commissioner Laciando, you're closer than I am.
Okay.
Oh, there, now they're large enough, but go ahead.
Okay. Bob, you just want me to read them off?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Laciando, if you just go ahead and read each one into the record.
Okay. We have Blue Sky Consulting Services, Cater, Ruma and Associates Company, Griffith Engineering Incorporated, Levy Engineering and Building Commissioning LLC, Northwest Engineering Service Incorporated, Seed Idaho PC, VBFA, and Welsh Commissioning Group Incorporated.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bob, you'll need some time.
Yes, Madam Chair, the evaluation team will need some time to review these proposals, and we'd like your request to be tabled for final ranking and request interfe negotiations to the September 1st, 2020 Open Business Meeting. And, uh, request inter fee negotiations to the September first, two thousand twenty open business meeting.
Okay, September first. Commissioner LaChiando?
Got it. Madam Chair, I move to table the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations of RFQ two zero zero six five, commissioning agent for new Coroner's Facility to September first, two thousand twenty.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next, we have review of bids. Received an award recommendation for public works projects, fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. And Bob, it looks like we have two bids. You want to start with the first one?
Yes, Madam Chair, the, uh, first one for your review this morning is, uh, bid two zero zero six seven, the demolition of four nineteen North Allenbaugh House. And, uh, we received two responses for this and we'd like to submit a letter of the bids received and then award recommendation, uh, for your consideration.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Before we move on, just so people aren't confused.
Yes, verification.
Yeah, I don't think we're demo, we're demolishing Allenbaugh House, the detox facility. It's a building at four nineteen North Allenbaugh Street. So just to be clear.
Let's go ahead and correct the record to reflect that we are not demolishing the Allenbaugh House. This is Allenbaugh Street. Okay. All right, you want to go ahead, Bob?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, I'll go ahead and read this, uh, letter into the record for you. It's, uh, dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty, uh, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two zero zero six seven. Uh, dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two zero zero six seven. The follow-up are the names of the bidders and the bid amount submitted. Uh, bidder number one was Northwest Technologies, uh, with a bid amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, bidder number two was AAI Demolition with a bid amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two zero zero six seven to Northwest Technologies Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Great. Okay. You need a discussion? There are no further discussion? Let's go ahead and make a motion.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid two zero zero six seven demolition of four nineteen North Allenbaugh Street to Northwest Technologies Incorporated in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have bid two zero zero seven three.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, we have, uh, bid two zero zero seven three, the Ada County Courthouse third floor IT roof replacement, twenty twenty project before you. We received, uh, three responses for this project and would like to submit a letter about, um, the bids received and a recommendation for award for your consideration.
Please say.
All right, so, uh, letter dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two zero zero seven three. Uh, dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received three responses for bid two zero zero seven three. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amount submitted. Uh, bidder number one was Nations Roof Mountain LLC and they have their bid amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. bidder number two was Signature Roofing and their bid amount was eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. And bidder number three was Upson Company and their bid amount was seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for bid two zero zero seven three to Upson Company as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Nope. Looking good? All right, go ahead and entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid two zero zero seven three, Ada County Courthouse third floor IT roof replacement, twenty twenty to Upson Company in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and we're going to go into recess and then we'll reconvene as the Emergency Medical Services District. as the Emergency Medical Services District. Hey, good morning, everyone. Today's Tuesday, August eighteenth, and the time is nine thirty-five a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session to meet with the Emergency Medical Services District. We have all three commissioners with us. Also in the room with us, we have?
Sean Green, Ada County Procurement.
In the back.
As you were, Prosecutor's Office.
Hammond Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Hey, welcome, everyone. Peace. Got Steve Rutherford in the back. Way in the back. He's way, way socially distancing.
But we still have our eye on him, so.
That's right. Okay, I think we do have a change to the agenda and we're gonna need to remove the agreement from the agenda. Before we do that, is there anything that you'd like to speak to? Sean?
Madam Chair, I saw that item on the agenda yesterday, and currently, we don't have our psychiatric emergency team stood up with the community paramedic program. We stood that down in March, and so I didn't wanna, you know, have the Inogen Services Department paying for a service that's not there currently. And so, we can revisit that when we get the program.
Okay, okay. Fabulous. Great, thanks. Okay, let's go ahead and remove it then.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the agenda to remove item five, Para N four, Agreement Number one three eight three five, Memorandum of Understanding Between Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District for Support of the Community Paramedic Program, FY twenty-one, from the agenda.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Madam Chair, I move to remove unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye. 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 Guys have it. Motion carries. So next, we're gonna take up unfinished business resolution two five three nine, establishing the Ada County Emergency Medical Services District Development Impact Fee Advisory Board. That's a mouthful. Commissioner Lacheyando, for the sake of the public, you wanna just once again state what this is?
We sit as two different boards, even though we are the same people, Board of County Commissioners and the Board of the Emergency Medical Services District. This Development Impact Advisory Committee will all be the same people, but they have to do it on behalf of the two different functions. So with that, I move to, unless there's further discussion.
No, that's good.
Okay, I move to approve resolution number two five three nine as listed on the agenda.
Right, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. Next, we have new business. Need a motion for the Claims Journal.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, regarding EMS expenditures.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. Next, I'll need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. Alright, just open discussion. How's it going?
Excellent.
Anything you wanna report or talk to us about this morning?
Not really. I feel kinda like I'm gonna be able to hit the ground running, you know. It's like, like I've said before, it's kinda like coming home after a long trip or a deployment, so. You know, just getting my arms around kind of the changes that occurred in the last year and a half, and so.
So we, we received an opinion. We put in an EPIC for hazard pay for EMS, and we received an opinion back. So if it's okay with you as a board, we can now forward that on to Sean to take a look at. You can look at the bolded language, I think, on the second page is what we're really looking to, but it looks like most of your folks would qualify.
So, Sean, I think, excuse me, Madam Chair, and this is kind of a larger conversation that we're gonna have, but just looking at the case data coming out of Central District Health, we are just not, while first responders are getting COVID, we are less seeing than getting COVID from on-work-site exposure. It's, it's the after-hours, the barbecues, the baby showers, the what-have-you, and so. You know, your team has been really great. I mean, Steve really emphasized that and continued to emphasize it and have been real role models, I think, showing the community, you know, why masking is important. But I think that's a conversation we're gonna continue to need to have, especially as we talk about hazard pay.
We have it nine o'clock on Thursday. Yes, we're ready to. So Dottie will be there, Sean will be there. The sheriff may or may not be there, but if not, he's gonna have Scott, and I asked for Kate to attend that meeting, so we really need to talk through this. The first responder positivity rates, we're getting close to thirty percent, and that's just unacceptable.
Madam Chair, luckily, this morning, we are currently at zero people on quarantine or isolation, which is a good thing. We saw similar things at Boise Fire where most of our exposures were occurring off-duty. The fact that I'm not aware of a single case that has been through transmission from seeing a nation. Because we're wearing our PPE on every single call, and so it's those after-hours things that we're.
And this is the conversation that we, you know, all of us together as a group need to have in conjunction with that hazard pay, and we really need to, I think, have you as a role model, talk about what you're doing and how you're talking to your folks and how they behave after hours. I think that's gonna be really critical.
I think you guys have been real leaders in all of this. I think the paramedics have been role modeling, both in their, you know, onsite work, but also what they're doing after hours, and so would like to be able to hold you up as good examples.
Sure.
If the rest of us are socially deprived, we all need to be socially deprived. Alright, anything else you wanna discuss, or just we look forward to seeing you on Thursday morning then?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, let's go ahead then. We're gonna go into recess, and we'll reconvene as Avamore Community Infrastructure District. Come on up, Hammond. Good morning, everyone. Today's Tuesday, August eighteenth, and the time is nine forty-five a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is sitting as Avamore Community Infrastructure District Number One Board. We have Commissioner Lacheyando with us. Commissioner Malloy is absent today. Also in the room with us, we have Hammond Taylor and Steve Rutherford. No one on bridge. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clark?
No, there are not.
It's okay. I need a motion then for the new business.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, regarding Avamore CID expenditures.
I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna need a motion to go into executive session to review, looks like the statute.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to go into executive session under Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six, Para N one, Subparenz D F N I, to discuss legal advice regarding District Development Agreement Number One and the Community Infrastructure District Act, and vote to do so shall be by roll call and recorded in the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that. Commissioner Lacheyando.
Aye.
Commissioner Kenyon states aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. An executive session. I'll wait for Luke.